Twenty twenty four. I want to send welcome to everybody to the president and the audience on the line. Thank you for giving up your day to be with us. Work sessions are designed for council to receive information and also to discuss items or issues affecting the city. And we do not take a vote during these work sessions. So with that, we have several discussion items on the agenda and we'll start with the development code updates. We call freeze our meeting development director. All right, well, the good news is this is tentative, we have last meeting. So. Take back their third. Two. And the goal of this meeting was to kind of recap what we've done and discuss two things in kind of a kind of a preliminary form and see if you want to go forward. And if that was the case, we're going to have to go into session to be like a workshop or any time. Just just so everybody understands. So Scott, I just want to mention that we found out Mike would be stuck in Dallas airport. He might be with us too. Instead of you said that. You are in the roll call now. See, there's a lot of sorry. It's okay. So let's go to the next step. So start on the recap. So we have gone through a few hundred pages of proposed code changes. About two thirds of them have been presented to the planning commission. The final two thirds that you just talked about the last few months have not been presented to them yet, just because they're kind of backed up. But I don't get, I'll talk about that later. But moving forward, just like when I started here and how we kind of went about this process. There was a spreadsheet when I got here of like four hundred code issues that I came from some of you and you know developers and citizens. So we'll continue to maintain a spreadsheet on a yearly basis of issues. So you know, first, I think we know that this is a call, you know, there is, things will come up that we maybe weren't aware of with code or or development concerns that you know are kind of maybe new or or bring up issues that need to be addressed. And then the goal is to kind of address them on a yearly basis. Bring that, I think, maybe the work session or the planning commission first, you know, that's something you can discuss. So that's, that's the goal right now. So this was the major update for now. And I, at least for the next year or two, the goal is to produce some minor updates on that yearly basis. Track them in this in this way. So does that sound good? And so what we've done so far, so the boards and commissions, which had, I think, all of the fanfare or citizen concern, right? So that was and it took a lot longer, I think, than anybody than anybody imagined. So that disbanded the DRB. That the HRBC was part of that, and that was the city only planning commission. So that, that really went from April to really September. That took a lot of time and we finally got approved in September twenty twenty three. Historic preservation changes, which kind of were done at the same time. Got, got it finally approved, finally recommended last night. And so those included some rewriting that whole historic preservation section of the development. I think, I think we feel like it's, it's a lot clearer, especially with the example mentioned, and the whole process is a lot clearer. So that's going to be coming back to you. Obviously, in the next month or two. So I have to work with Scott when he like that to come forward, but they, they did approve it unanimously last night. I think we had four work sessions, as he said, you know, these from HBF, because they attended each one. But there were four work sessions from the planning commission and we talked about it over four meetings. So, you know, we had a lot of, a lot of really positive discussion and a lot of consideration, I think, of all possible scenarios. And, you know, what was done with the planning commission now needs to go to our city attorney for a final kind of dot guy across the T to make sure everything was done correctly. And then comes to you for two weeks. So that, that, that big thing has already been crossed off. Next, we did the zoning chapter. That's been kind of put on hold because the historic preservation, the boards and commission kind of were the first major things. So the zoning was done in September and October. Been, been to the PC since March. We have not really discussed it. And so that'll be coming forward here soon, I guess, as we go to the next segments. Then we did, in April and May, we did trees, design landscaping, and then May, last month, was the subdivision infrastructure sections. So those, those are all kind of, you know, it's actually over, you know, two hundred and fifty pages worth of stuff. At the last meeting in May, you decided to prioritize the subdivision infrastructure and the planning commission agrees. And so that will be heard at their next meeting. Then after the July meeting, we were going to prioritize the tree section of the ordinance. And then so we're going to get back to the design and the zoning section that was done basically in the winter. That's the plan right now. Again, sort of preparation is going to be coming to you soon. But after that, then the subdivision infrastructure, which is really providing all those standards that we kind of needed to improve upon to make decisions. And then that three canopy and three centers will come after that. So, so hopefully by the end of the summer, we can be done with the tree, at least the trees and the subdivision standards. And then hopefully, you know, in the fall or later fall, those, those other hundred and something pages will be back to you from the planning commission. So, but I can, I can assure you that with three attorneys, a developer, two architects and an engineer, that they are going through everything with wanting to come. And it is, I think, really positive. I think, I think the end product is that you're going to see, and we can make changes to do it. It's definitely going to be much better than what I produced at the beginning of those code edit sessions. I don't know if anybody had any questions about the
I have a question. So city council talks about all the zoning and code changes. I'm sorry. Jeremiah Smith, eleven oh seven West Street. Just a question on process. So city council talks about these code changes, but planning commission really decides.
Yeah, actually, the next slide was actually the correct. Yeah, so under state statute, the planning commission has to make a recommendation before they can officially change. And so now that they have for the historic preservation section, they can make that vote. Doesn't mean they have to agree with the planning commission, because the planning commission is a recommending body. But the city council just has to know the planning commission before they can.
Okay, so it comes back to city council, city council votes.
Right. Yeah, well, it's kind of like the NPC and all that recommended open to council and then we vote on it.
Was that your question? Or were you asking, because it comes to our work session first, then it goes to the planning commission, then it goes to us in a regular session for reading there?
I guess I'm kind of wondering if I want to give input, should I give it more to city council or planning commission?
Jeremiah, especially if it changes between meetings, right? Because Kurt may bring something to council, it may look one way. Council may have a different idea, and by the time Kurt takes it to the planning commission, it may be a little.
Explain that. I think I can explain that. I'll explain the infrastructure, so it goes next. Some success of May meeting. And then the three last day proposing for August. And the others will be probably drawn forward in the fall and so that's a good reason. Does anybody have any final questions on the recap?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. So I think that the the ordinance for the demolition, part of the, what was passed from the planning commission last night, I think evolved very well. I am not sure if at any point in time the HRB was included in that conversation. But just for record, if, if we could, when it comes to us, I would like to invite them to the table to be a part of that conversation. Just because I feel like we made, we made those appointments to put people in place that we feel like have experience in historic preservation and are, are concerned with protecting the integrity of that district. So for them to be a part of the conversation in regards to what, what they would be enforcing, I think we could benefit from. So if they haven't been part of the conversation, then I would like them to be part of our conversation when we talk about it. The rest of council is okay with that and if it's possible for us to do that. That's my thought.
Next, these are just two, you know, just some ideas for the future. Think about promise traces. But one thing that's come up, you know, there's been a lot of concern about development and losing open space and, you know, tree canopy. That seems to be a major concern. And so one thing to I thought I might give something that'd be considered is proposing a conservation subdivision. And so a conservation subdivision would require seventy five to eighty percent of the land would have to be set aside and dedicated and a permanent open space or perpetuity. Right? And then you could develop the rest of the lot and get density bonuses or something of that matter in a kind of a more ecologically and environmentally sensitive nature. So even the development that occurs would be a little more sensitive to the lands around it. And so the thought would be, you know, would this be something the county up top in the county, you know, I, I think, I think, you know, I didn't get a clear answer on it, but I think they kind of thought about this with their but we'll see how this goes is that, you know, is this an opportunity for the city to create a district that could maybe incentivize someone who is, you know, a developer that might want to annex or develop in the city? And both basically gain open space tax funds on the eighty percent or seventy five percent they save. And then still have a portion of property that they can develop. And so you know, that, that's the idea here is that, you know, I think there's obviously a community wide goal for, for more open space, right? But yeah, it still allows some development and then make it somewhat attractive for anybody. Is that very true? I was just gonna say, is there a minimum in terms of acreage that this would apply to? We would have to come up with standards if you go forward. It's just that would all have to be discussed. So if you're interested in this, we would probably need to do a work session and talk about it. I obviously got a lot of experience with this because this is a very, you know, in Colorado, this is kind of a big deal, right? And this is how they handle on their open space program, right? Is if, if the county doesn't, or the city doesn't own the open space outright, you know, with the, you know, the conservation subdivision is kind of one of the primary avenues to preserve land, right, for those open spaces because, you know, they're able to use the open space money. Because they allow open space taxes, whole counties out there and, but yet still allow some development and kind of those.
You share with me the how, how, how do they generate the money to incentivize the property wanted to participate?
Well, they have the one percent. Most of the, a lot of the counties have the one percent or a sales tax, if you will. They also have a lottery, the lottery, most of the money in the lottery is expected to be in open space. Funds a lot of the open space, but like Blair or Boulder County both have like a one percent. Then the open space that goes directly only to open space management. And there's also just a lot of groups there that, you know, are very active, you know, a lot of nonprofits and conservation. I mean, you have a lot of land, you know, water is, there's a lot of land, right? It's not like here. So it's not maybe the bad, you know, so while I say this, you know, it is a different environment.
It looks good, except it would not work, I don't think, unless the county came on board with it. Because basically, I think it'll be property that if we eventually annex something, then it would be in the, you know, annex as a conservation district, I think. But if the county isn't participating, then it makes it very undesirable for the person to want to be annexed.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's a good, and I think, you know, that's out of my powers, right? That's something I think, you know, if the council is interested, would, would that be something the county would then consider, right? I think that's where we're going with this is, you know, if, if the county would consider this.
Okay, so, so maybe I'm a little bit confused. I have two comments. One, to Neil's point, so could this be available to somebody that owns property in the city that says zone T four in and they wanted to, I guess this would be more of a down zone, down zone into a conservation subdivision and not necessarily have to annex in from the county? Because if that's the case, then we really wouldn't need the county to be on board. It'd be nice if they were for properties that maybe would be annexed in the future. But if this was available to people who already own the property in the city as an option, then they necessarily wouldn't have to be on board right away. Is that right?
Well, there, there, I think you're excellent question. I think there's multiple answers to that. And the fact that you can do conservation subdivisions as like an overlay. What you're talking about could be you could incentivize an existing property owner in any district, right, to do a conservation subdivision or cluster development. It's kind of in the old U D O that the city has had a proviso for that, like a little overlay. You could do it that way. You could create your own district, an own zoning district, that's a conservation subdivision. That is the district, right? Have such standards. You could do one or two things. You could do either one of those things and that could be the incentive. Or you know, it could be like we were talking about, it could be, since, you know, the city doesn't really get any of that open space funds. If you allow either the overlay or the district, you, you, you would basically have eighty or whatever we came up with, you would have that percentage saved. So if you wanted to annex, right? Or if you own property in the city that hadn't been developed, like the Harding Street property. That's the Harding Street property is a perfect example. I mean, that was given a really high density that probably the infrastructure wasn't necess, you know, you don't have the uses, but it was done twenty years ago, right? But, you know, some development is probably okay there, but it's also a sensitive area. So that would, you know, maybe if the property owner knew that they could get, you know, saves, still build like ten or twelve houses on the water close to the water, but save the rest of it and get paid for that eighty percent with the county's fund. That might have made that really attractive if we had this opportunity. So I mean, I, I guess I'm saying, you know, you could do this, and even if the county didn't say that they're going to put that open space money towards it, it would still be an option in the case of Harding Street. So give someone another tool in the box. Or it could be an option that, you know, people, if they could put some of the money, then it could become really attractive.
Second comment that I wanted to make, and this was in regards to the mayor's comment about the percentages or the acreages. So I don't know if you know this, but Anderson, South Carolina passed a very similar ordinance in twenty one. And so I took some notes because in theirs, it was no open space required for anything that was two acres or more. If it was one point nine acres or less, it required ten percent. If it was half acre to one acre, it required fifteen percent. And if it was under a half acre, it required twenty five percent. And those requirements were based on the total acreage for the whole development. So I'm not sure if as this evolves, if it would be worth cherry picking from their ordinance or maybe, you know, reaching out and just seeing if they've learned anything in the time that they've had it in place, but it was a short time ago, three years ago, that they put a very similar ordinance in place.
Yeah, I think we would, we would have to look at other places because, you know, Buford's got a very, you know, it's a very unique, right? The body, basically, the land that's available, lands with restricted by law. I think we have to think about much lower, when you see this around the country, it's usually larger lots and in larger areas that are being protected. I don't know, but that's really, we have to think, I think, like you said, in smaller, more infill kind of environment. We just don't have as large a track of land. In this area, just because of how the environment is. So, yeah, I think we have to really study that and, and try to figure out what is best for Buford. If you wanted to go down.
I would sustain the logic of the, the larger percentages were required in the smaller acreage, it would seem like just be the other way around. If I buy.
Yeah, I think that too. Yeah, smaller, smaller acreages, I'm.
This in Anderson's, you know, correct with my wrong, but I think in Anderson's example that Josh has shared with us, that the larger percentage of green space was required. The larger percentages were required in the smaller acreages. Is that correct?
It's correct, but I guess if you think about it from, and I don't know how the rest of their zoning is written, but if their zones would only allow one house or that two acres, then by default, almost most of that property would be green space or it wouldn't be development because they'd have one house. And then the rest of those two acres would be, you know, yard space. So I don't know how the rest of it's written, but that's just what they outlined in that ordinance. So I think we'd have, we'd have to take a deeper dive to see maybe why they put those percentages in place. But you are right, the, the less, it says, you know, less than a half acre would require twenty five percent.
Which, which would probably in a single family development, it would only have one house on it anyway. So I mean, it's like, you know, giving him something that's just going to happen anyway. Whereas if you had the bar, like they, it's, you know, you, the green space.
But I think too, those requirements are, that and those percentages are based off of not each individual lot, but the total acreage to be developed. So if you have a house on, say, a half acre lot and you have a ten acre development, you're going to have a lot more houses. So they're going to require more percentage to remain green space, which means less houses overall, smaller lots. So I think that clause that states that the percentage is not just based on like twenty five percent of half an acre, but rather twenty five percent of the ten acres total. And then you start dividing into half acre lots from there. That's how I understood it. Does that make sense?
And there could be multiple variations of this, you know, I think what the city had before was really kind of more incentivizing some open space, but it didn't really set the amount. So it could be a lot, it doesn't have to be eighty percent. You know, it could be a much more manageable amount and the fact that you get open space, but you're.
And I think it's important to highlight too that we're, this would be another way to provide or conserve green space because we're already working in the direction of removing the exemption that was in place for T three and and higher, right? So we're already doing that, but in addition, if we did something like this, it would basically be just hitting it from a different angle.
That's, that's the goal. It's just to provide us with some more tools and, you know, and I think the Harding Street and, you know, a lot of complaints we've seen, you know, there's just a desire to be more conservative. So just another tool. And, you know, if you're concerned, if you're, you find it interesting, you know, like, we can think about it some more.
I'd like to see this too. I would too. I mean, we need to slow the growth a little bit. I think that's the tool that works.
Yeah, definitely. I think it's worth the conversation.
All right, I think there's another slide. I thought it, yeah, it's just some standards like, you don't have to do, like I said, you want to. And there's a lot of details that have to be worked out, so we'll. And then finally, the last slide, which I'll have to do for this thing for a long time and so on. What, and the other, another thing that's been discussed is design guidelines. And so how, how best to say this, right now, the form-based code has prescriptive design requirements. However, they're, they're somewhat general. And I think as you've been going through the code, I think you, you all looked at those design requirements in the code and they're not voluminous by any means, right? They're, and they're not terribly, you know, they're not terribly specific either. So they're, they're actually allow a lot of variation, which is, which is good, allow some creativity. However, I think I've heard a lot of concern that, you know, that Buford has a vernacular architecture that, you know, it's a and, and, and a desire that it's a, you know, a special place, right? It has a special built form. And our code, you know, maybe could how do we make sure that that's preserved in the future? Not from a preservation standpoint, but just, you know, if JJ comes in with, you know, his his gas station, that his gas station doesn't look like a gas station from Iowa, right? And it looks like a station that's very specific to the low country, but to Buford, not just Charleston or Buford has its own style. And so, you know, one way to go about that in a lot of communities in South Carolina is, is design guidelines. And though there were design guidelines in the old U D O that were, I had pictures and then form that, that, you know, with specific low country and Buford elements that they wanted to see on every building. Whatever that may be, the roof form or exterior materials, porches, that kind of thing. And so, you know, one idea is to create a kind of a simple set of guidelines. Like basically if JJ is coming in with this, you know, like gas station and it's built all over South Carolina, right? And he, you know, and, and we want to provide him a guide, you know, this is kind of, we give that to them. This is kind of what we want it to look like. And it's not prescriptive. It means it's not saying he has to meet every, you know, every corner has to be a certain, you know, type and every, there's a certain pitch on the roof that has to be met every single time. It's, it's basically a set of guidelines that should be met in spirit, right? And so that's, that's kind of a thought, you know, I don't know if that's something you would like. Obviously, we'd have to work on the, it would take some time. We'd probably need to, you know, have to have a architect spend a little bit of money on it. But it wouldn't be too much, I don't think. But I think the goal would be the citizens, staff and developers would have kind of, you know, a general framework what new development would look like in Buford in the future. And that would be approved by council and the planning commission and kind of being a ten of them, just like this housing. I, being a ten, then basically did the code and the conference plan that we used when the gas station came in. So that's the, that's the idea. And I've been in favor of this for a long time, and I do think we probably ought to define it as non-residential development. Basically, as, as you mentioned, guidelines to try and encourage them so that they don't look like anywhere in USA. You look like the low country when you come in, in the town. And I think that would help make our city stand out even more.
When you say non-residential, I think you have to specify and say non-single family homes. Because say non-residential, then you got a barber, not a.
Well, true, yeah, true.
Should be non-single family homes.
You could do the design guidelines for each type, you know, you could do a urban design guideline, right? It could be separated out. That's, I think, how we would do by district and type. You know, apartments, suburban apartments should look different than urban apartments. Should have their own design guidelines.
Now, I like this idea and I've liked it for a while. I think we had a conversation with HBF not long ago, and if I ever. I think we had a conversation with HBF not long ago, and if I remember right, that conversation. Included the benefit of having single-family residents in the historic district. Being kind of an option like this as well, that was of an approved design for that district, is that right? We were talking about single-family.
Yeah, yeah, so because of the large amount of vacant lots that are throughout that area. It would be great for us to, to be able to have uh, a model of an affordable home. Option that are multiple, I think, would fill up, we talked with it further with Phil, multiple options. Uh, that would give people an idea that is affordable, that provides homeownership. And utilizes these vacant lots throughout the district.
So, single-family, if, if I, if I think, it might be a good idea to include a single-family, because you didn't, you know. Although we don't have a ton of single-family development, um, you can, if you had some decent design guidelines. You know, I, I think Lake Bluffton is a good example, uh, where, where Sky used to be, you know, you see some of these. Or, or some of the subdivisions here that were built in the past. A trap builder is going to build their same model here to Iowa, right? And they're gonna build their X like five hundred, and they know that they can sell it, it's a certain square footage, it's the same. But if they have to build to a certain standard, and it's like a low-country design, they'll do it if they want to be in the heart of it. Might cost them marginally a little bit more, but it gives us a little more power when D R or something comes in.
Thing, I would know, but I, I would think there would be something attractive about having something that was already approved, that you could select from. And not have to run through the entire process from creating a development or a residence from, from scratch. So I, I would like to see this done, but if we did it. I'm not sure why we wouldn't go ahead and have options for, for everything if it wasn't too, um. If it wasn't too challenging to go ahead and take commercial and multifamily and single-family and, um, you know, have, have something that's, um. You know, pre-approved for the historic district and then maybe something different in different areas. But go ahead and get it all done at one time, if we, if we move forward with it. Just to have options for. For anybody that was coming to, to do something, should they decide to go that route?
I think it does provide some level of, uh, you know, if I'm a developer, my number one concern, well, my two big concerns are time. Is, you know, can I get this approved? And what this, what do I need to do to get this approved, right? I want, I want to know, you know, what is the cookbook to get this approved, right? I want to know, right? So hopefully that would, hopefully, you know, hey, here, look, they've got a general set of guidelines, I'd like to see. This is, you know, I think, again, this is different than it is with historic preservation in the sense that that's. Generally a specific project plopped into a historic district with specific, you know, that already historic. I don't, you know, this, this is, you know, building a gas station, right? And, and so we want a, a certain general design, but I think, you know, the developer is coming in and they're trying to spend money, right? They're trying to develop, they're trying to get it approved. And, and we're just trying to make sure that, you know, we have an easy process that everybody's happy with and the community's happy with. And they can get approved, right? It's not this big, smash, you know what I mean?
I think it's great for predictability, because we want to put predictability into the process. The, the, the other side of the argument, however, is to be sure that if we do something like this. Then we don't have our discretionary boards, HTRB and planning commission, thinking that only these designs can be approved. Um, so we would have to be very careful with that. We wouldn't want to be too restrictive on, on what could get approved. But I like the fact that it would lend predictability to this.
Hey, please.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. We, we kind of flushed this idea out a little bit more with, with HBM. And uh, the thought was.
They say in that.
Oh, Lisa Sandoval, Story Buford Foundation.
Yeah, we are.
Thank you. But this could be an opportunity, if you want to take it, um, that we invite architects to submit. Designs based on criteria that is developed. And uh, and then they submit the designs that can meet that criteria. If we're looking for affordable options, we're looking for two-bedroom, and we're looking for one-bedroom, we're looking for this or gas station. Or what have you, um, rather than hiring a singular architect to present something. Um, instead, open it up to Jeremiah, open it up to, you know, other, other architects in the area. Um, who understand what we're trying to do and our goals and our ideas. And then I think you, you choose because you want to have multiple options. You don't want to have one design, and then we do look like, you know, that we're Pleasantville. So you want to, which we could be Pleasant, but Pleasantville. Um, so I would open it up to, so that you have some variety. And people realize, you know, what they're developing it for, is it for the historic district to look a little bit different than it might be. On Salem Road, or it might be, you know, somewhere else. That's just a.
You got other comments from the public on here?
Jim, last man. I think guidelines and uh, pre-approved plans are very different, though. I don't think they can be the same thing. Guidelines sounds like more predictability, but another set of requirements. Um, I don't know if that sounds like a great idea for developers. And then, like I said, I think pre-approved plans, um, is a totally different discussion. There's probably a lot of those plans out there already, if I didn't.
A good point, was this talking about, I mean, no sets of design guidelines, but were we talking about pre-approved plans, or that was something separate?
No, it's something.
But I think pre-approved plans is more so what our conversation has been, and every time, um. We've talked about adding predictability to it. So this would just be another set of, of guidelines that was in line with the code, maybe providing pictures or something that would.
Pictures, yeah, schematics.
Okay, well, for clarification. Me personally, I am more in favor of a pre-approved design that was in line and added predictability. And I'm willing to have a conversation with design guidelines, but I think too, that we probably benefit more from having something. A pre-approved design that somebody can come in and select from and have, you know, multiple options. Um, just to kind of help streamline that process, I'm not sure that this would, maybe it would make it easier with the visuals, but.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I, I, I'm struggling with trying to get my head around all this. We, I, I think, listen to Lisa, I don't think we want to cookie, kind of, in fact. But we have pre-approved designs and you get quite a few folks liking the same design. Uh, we also gotta have requirements, like, uh, uh, you know, in a, I guess, a neighborhood where, you know, they have the distance of a certain. You know, you can't have two right next to each other.
We need to work out the details, you know, obviously, in the criteria. Because there's multiple materials, multiple roof types, multiple directions that fit within the low-country feel.
That's why I think the pictures are very helpful, because they can, gotta get an idea of what you're looking for. And then they can decide what they want based on those pictures, as long as it comes up. I guess, looking low country or the Buford vernacular, if you will. To make it look like you're in a special place, because you can go down Boundary Street, and I mean, some of these places, you could be in Ohio. You know, it's too bland, and it's, it's, you know, we're in a special place, and it may, it may look special. And if you look at the refuel, the new gas station up on twenty-one, that's a perfect example. Something that kind of fits in the low country.
So you, you would say that both of these, the design guidelines and the pre-approved plans, would ultimately work to accomplish the same goal? Right? To kind of have a standard.
I haven't been thinking of the pre-approved plans, but uh.
I swing, could do a less expensive version of average, you know, basically, I mean, that's a low country feel, but that's a lot more. Price here, but we can do a lower, you know, use that as a kind of a guideline. Yeah.
So, um. So with, with, with. With, with these builders, these, oh, would they still go through H D R B to get these pre-approved plans?
They have already, we're talking about, we're not talking about historic preservation, we're talking about, uh, outside of historic. They already have preservation manual, which is super specific on every single detail of every, every product, project in the storage. Right, this, this would be general design guidelines for everything else.
So I think to your question, so let's take it outside of the historic district, just anywhere else in the city. If you had a pre-approved design, if that was in place, would they still have to go through the review body to. To move that forward, because it's pre-approved, would it then just go through staff?
I mean, I, I guess you could come up with pre-approved, I just don't know how we would do that, but if you've got a commercial, that's. I think you could do that with store, like windows and things of that nature, probably a lot easier. Come up with a pre-approved commercial or all time, you know, that, that seems. It seems like it would be hard to accomplish.
Um, maybe, I would, I, I would disagree, um. But I think, so there was, there's a company, um, Optico's, they've been doing it for about twenty-four years. And that's exactly what they do, is they take, um, whether it's municipal or government, county government codes. And they look at their code, and then they design pre-approved either single-family residence, commercial, multifamily, the whole thing. And, and then they present the, the staff and the councils with, um, pre-approved options. And, and if they adopt those, they then have pre-approved plans that basically sit in a, a catalog. And somebody could come through, look at the catalog and say, we want to do this, and it's already pre-approved. The issue has been, like in, um, California in two thousand and fifteen, there was a liability issue, a balcony collapsed. And at that point, the discussion hadn't taken place of who was liable. Was it the architects who did the pre-approved design? Is it the municipality? Is it the, the contractor that built it? So working out those details, um, maybe would take some thought and obviously legal opinion. But I do know that there are companies that have done just that for both commercial, single-family residence. Now, whether or not we want to do that, that's.
Yeah, that's another thing, I guess I didn't know, but uh, it makes sense because California's process takes so long.
Right.
I would think for Buford, that would be, I mean, just this personal opinion, it would be really expensive for us. Uh, to come up with enough plans to create enough variation, right? To make it not look, everything look the same. So, you know, the goal, the, the idea here, and you don't have to, you know, this is your idea, is to provide some predictability to that design. Yet still allow some creative, right? You know what I mean? And so, is that easy to do? I, I don't know, but does it create extra costs? Maybe, or does it actually reduce it in the sense that there's more predict, I, you know?
I guess if nothing else, this kind of seems like it could be a, a first step in that direction, right? Because we could always do something else if, if pre-approved design makes sense. But this at least is a first step in the direction of having a, a more predictable process.
Yeah, this is meant to be very general, what are the important architectural or design features? And it could be done per districts, we have transect and non-transect districts. And, you know, what are those important things? And, you know, each, each one could have a few pages of, and like a list of, you know, roofs should recommend it, you know, you know what I mean? And some pictures of that, but not by no means designing for them, just giving a general guide. So it's just, just thought it would take some money to develop, again, it's just a thought. But this, this would be something we would have to, you know, do a few work sessions on.
And were there, do you know, off the top of your head, any communities in the state, right, that have design guidelines for their communities? I'd probably help them out.
Yeah, they, I know Pleasant, I know, has really intensive design guidelines. Simply done, um, and in fact, there used to be design guidelines part of the U D O before the lights of the form. I don't know, probably, you could see some of the design guidelines, but.
Don't we still have some in our Buford code? It may not be as detailed, but.
They're not as detailed, but, yeah, they're facing.
Well, what I wanted to say, yes, you sort of got.
Yeah, they.
Oh, Cynthia Jenkins, the Story Buford Foundation. Outside of what our discussions have been, and it all been around affordable housing and affordability. Uh, because what we do not want to do, I don't think, anywhere is create thing marks of these false. Kind of communities of, of a Buford style. That's not our, our history. Um, but as what Jeremiah's talking about, originally, when Buford was originally laid out. Parliament said the lots were this size and the houses had to be this long and this deep. And, you know, you could certainly create uh, guidelines like that. But I'm, I'm a little nervous when you start acting like a developer and providing designs for an entire. Process, an entire neighborhood, and that seems like, is that where you're headed?
Uh, me? Um. No, not really, because I think that this would be, if, if something like this was done, even in its most extreme. For sake of this conversation with the pre-approved housing designs, then it would still be just options. Since, should somebody just decide to choose that, um, to have something that they knew was already pre-approved? Or if they just wanted to kind of get an idea of what the community wanted, by looking at that, they could do so. But it wouldn't be mandated by, by a sense, the code would mandate what the development became. So I think i- this would just be, um, this would just be an option to kind of help boot the process along. A little bit faster, but still have an end product that was in line with what.
It's so, would your design also include options for different materials, different window styles? Different roofing materials, that kind of thing, or are you just?
I think there would be basic recommendations, what you, I, I think it's just a basic.
Yeah.
Each year's time, right? Uh, what should be avoided, what should. Recommended, and then that would provide, like, the planning. Maybe some guidance, say, C projects. You have a question?
Yeah, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Thanks, Dirk.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, transportation sales tax referendum, we're turning over to the city. Recently, actually last week, uh, the council. Had on their council agenda, third reading for the transportation and sales tax referendum for the fall election ballot. And they changed it during the meeting, the third meeting, second meeting, and then they changed the parameters. Of the referendum in a pretty significant way. Uh, they changed the parameters from collecting one point sixteen thousand billion dollars over fifteen years. To collecting nine hundred fifty million dollars over ten years. And with that, they also amended the scope of projects that were already identified in the previous version of the referendum. As well as, uh, some of the dollar amounts that were allocated to various communities and municipalities. So because of that, several council members have asked if we could talk about this. And so I put this information in your packets, just to queue up the discussion. Uh, to give you an opportunity to express what you may be concerned about. And provide any type of direction you may want to provide for staff, she was the boss. So that, um, of production, what we're asking.
First of all, Revo Road, I mean, just the idea of them doing Revo Road, I think should be off the table. Uh, roundabouts, definitely. Horrible, horrible thing, idea, insane, I cannot believe they still want to do it from what I've heard. Um, I really feel that they should be. Um, I really feel that they should be, they put some money aside to step for a study for a third crossing. It keeps getting studied and studied and studied, but nothing ever gets done. I mean, we need to start taking action because of the growth we're getting. We really are desperately in need of a third crossing. I think that should be a priority on there.
One of the things that, uh, Jeff and Dean, I already talked to Scott about this, but I'm just asking the question for everyone else. Is, um, you know, it is a huge reduction. But in that face I read, I saw no explanation of what led them to that. I, I agree that there were a bunch of things in there that they were planning to use this one, any tax for it. They admitted, or even thought of yet, but they would have the body, hit the button, it came, it seemed ridiculous, but at the same time. I, I'd curious to know what, what drove the decision to make such a huge change without consulting? I don't think we were consulted, I'm pretty sure it was why not.
No, I, I think they probably scaled it back to make it more palatable to the voters. Because one point sixty-five billion over fifteen years is a long time. And I don't think there's enough specificity as to where this money is going to be spent. And you know, are, is the public trusting enough of the government to? You know, you trust them with all this money to do what needs to be done? That's, I think that's the issue. For me, and I'll agree with Neil, that the Reboot Road improvements, they didn't change the amount at all. Which leads me to believe maybe they're still thinking they're going to get the roundabouts and whatever. I don't know what else they're going to do with it. There may be a change. But then also north abroad, they've got transportation system improvements, thirty million dollars and it's supposed to be split between the unincorporated area of northern Buford County, town of Port Royal and the city of Buford. And there's no explanation of how they're going to give you all that up. And I personally feel if you give them thirty million to Hilton Head, thirty million a month, and why not fifteen million a piece for both Buford and Port Royal?
And, and the county?
Well, at the county, yeah, you can get it or the county take care of the unincorporated areas. Um, they're talking in here too, if you look at the North Borough transportation thing. Uh, it says flood prevention, uh, on access to such as Buffalo Island. Well, if you look down further on emergency rezaincement, they have fifty-five minutes. It says improvements to transportation infrastructure to address flooding and to level rise of water drainings. That should be where the worst thing comes into play. Um, and then they're also talking about pavement resurfacing and preservation. How is that going to be allocated? I mean, is there a, you know, a, a list of improvements that they already have that?
I understand question.
This is on the, um, if you look down, uh, on the emergency, I mean, excuse me, pavement resurfacing and preservation. They have fifty million dollars set aside for resurfacing and preservation of roadway. And includes state, local, and you know, county roads. I want to know how are they going to allocate that? Is, is there a list of roads they want to cover?
There, there is, because it was in a discussion on one of their meetings. I cannot remember which one now, but I think there was about eighty roads on that list that they were already. And all of those roads have been identified, yes. So I was trying to have J J pull up, um, and, and one of the emails that we got, there was basically a percentage breakdown for each reduction that they made. Um, and, and I too found, I've had several concerns throughout this whole process. One being that I feel like the municipalities have not been involved in this at all. And we, we need to, and we're elected to represent the concerns of our constituents. So I want to make sure that if, if we're supporting, which we passed a resolution supporting this referendum, um, supporting an increase in the, the sales tax that we can be assured that there is going to be funding that comes back down to us so that we can address the priorities that have been passed on to us by our constituents or through studies of the past, right? Um, and, and looking at the, the, the breakdown, so this is in their, um, their new nine hundred and fifty million dollar proposal. Now, I know that out of that, it's been stated several times that forty percent of this comes from tourists and visitors who are coming to the area. So you would say that we're, we're basically going to, um, the, the taxpayers of Buford County and saying we need five hundred and seventy million dollars and this is what we're going to spend it on. So I think being very clear on those projects and then the description on what's going to take place in those projects, which you can find, if you dig, you can find the description of what is intended for these, for these projects. But the estimates, I'm, yes, that one, I'm, I'm very unsure of how accurate those estimates are. And so a, a true concern becomes who identifies and has the final authority on the priorities and how they're funded. Because if these estimates are anything like the estimates that we've seen in the very recent future for some of the projects that we've gone after, this money is not going to go as far as they say. So if you, for, for one example, you look at the, um, pathways, right? So if, if I'm just looking at this as a, you know, layperson, I see pathways, uh, they have it reduced to twenty million. There's another one that says, find it here. Exists two thousand eighteen existing pathways, thirty million dollars. Okay. So that's all it says in here. Now, I know that a common concern that we hear from the people that we represent are the pathways over there on Salem. I think we've all heard it several times, right? So that was one of those, um, pathways that was identified in the two thousand eighteen referendum, but never funded. So if you look at what's left in the, from the two thousand eighteen existing pathways, there is about thirty million dollars worth of pathways that need to be funded from what I can see. And so if we've set aside thirty million dollars from that, the reality is if these estimates, which I don't know when the last time they received these estimates are again, because we haven't been part of the conversation at all. But if these estimates are five years old, I would venture to say that a fraction of the two thousand eighteen pathways that have not been funded completely are going to be funded out of this thirty million. So then my question becomes, that is the only identified pathway that is in our municipality that would benefit, that our citizens would benefit from. So how can I be assured that's going to be one that's funded? Because it could just be that this thirty million dollars gets spent on other pathways opposed to this one and has nothing to do with, um, you know, the people that we represent. So for me, the priority and who has final authority of that is concerning because I think whatever gets funded in the first year or two might actually be feasible. But outside of that, if prices continue to go up as they have, there's going to be a large portion of these projects that don't get funded out of this referendum. And you're going to have deficiencies, just like we have on Ladies Island, where we're forty million dollars under what the estimate was at the time that was, uh, that they received the estimate. So I find it interesting too, and I, and I was not there for any of these conversations that took place. But looking at the breakdown here, you can see that, um, the, where is the safety? So safety and traffic flow was reduced by sixty percent from two hundred and fifty million to a hundred million. And in the two thousand forty-five long-term transportation plan that was conducted in twenty-two, the number one identified concern in the survey that was taken by constituents showed that their one concern, their number one concern was safety. So we can say that some of these other projects that are being funded, like the Triangle, um, and Highway forty-six, those are probably in line with providing a safer commute for individuals using those roadways. But again, I'm trying to separate from the, the big picture in the moment because we have fourteen thousand people that we represent in the city. And so if you look at the breakdown, as you pointed out, the Hilton Head has thirty million dollars now for priorities identified by that municipality. Bluffton, same thing, thirty million dollars for priorities identified by that municipality. Those could quite literally be safety concerns for the constituents they represent. Well, we too have safety concerns on our roadways, Port Royal has safety concerns on their roadways. And then we have thirty million dollars to share between both of our priorities and the unincorporated areas, which it even includes, uh, you know, roads on Saint Helena in this, which I have no, no issue with those getting done. But when I'm looking at trying to justify a reason to support this increase in sales tax, I need to be able to say, this is what we know is going to be accomplished for the city of Buford. And we've identified safety concerns on our roadways and projects that need to be completed. And I can't see any of those being done. The only two things that we have on there are really Reboot Road, which there was a huge outcry at the last presentation because it wasn't in line with what the community wanted. Um, and then the Salem Road pathways, which I think we would all support that moving forward and getting done, but we have no guarantee from this that it's going to get done.
I mean, they've been promising the little walkway. I've been hearing it, I've been quiet.
So Mayor Protenic, he sent an email to say he was in Dallas waiting on flight. Um, he did register a couple of concerns and I would just like to share what those are so the rest of you are aware. Two of the specific concerns he shared were, uh, this revision was made to reduce the amount of the taxes collected and to reduce the side of the projects, still the projects, etc. Was made without consulting the Transportation Advisory Committee, which was appointed by county council. And that's a body to which we also have represented in Dean Moss, who represents jointly the city of Buford and the town of Port Royal. They were not consulted, uh, before the county decided to reduce this referendum in scope. Uh, and also he, he reiterated just what Councilman Scolay said, that there was not enough consultation with municipalities and putting these projects together, deciding what happens at the beginning, much less when it was revised. So those were his primary concerns.
So then I guess I, I would raise a question too, like you look at what they increased, right? So you have U S two seventy-eight, which I was, I was kind of hoping to get further clarification on what Hilton Head was doing. They were beaten on that today. It was part of their agenda packet. And, um, they basically need municipal consent in order to move forward with the project there. They have the rest of the funding in line. And based on the estimation that they have, they'll need about eighty million dollars from this. But you look at the increase there from sixty million to ninety million. If that's true and the estimate that they received tells them they need eighty million, that's fair. But you look at, um, S C forty-six from twenty million to fifty million. So I guess with a hundred and fifty percent increase on that project is, were they not planning to fund that project in its entirety with one point six billion dollars? And now with nine hundred and fifty million dollars, they need a hundred and fifty percent increase in order to fully fund that project? Um, and then you look at the, uh, the triangle, right? The Triangle project went from a hundred million to a hundred and twenty million. So we're, again, were they not going to fund that, um, entirely the first time around? And now all of a sudden they need an extra twenty million dollars there? So I think that there were increases that were made that arguably are not justified. I did not know until right now that our, that the committee was not consulted. But that's, that's a problem. And if you look through, which I'm glad that you included it in the packet here, um, the letter that we sent them, we identified those concerns. Because originally, they opted to avoid the complexity of having that oversight committee. Um, I, I think that's disingenuous to, you know, representing all of the municipalities and the county overall. But I'm, I'm not an expert in this. I would say that with all of the, the things that are going on in the county and how this process has played out with a lack of involvement from the municipalities and now the, the steering committee who is providing the priorities and a brand new county administrator that we don't know anything about. I would say they would be better off establishing a, 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 a traffic, um, authority. So if, I think the code that they reference, um, what is it, four dash thirty-seven dash thirty or something? So at the top of that, four dash thirty-seven dash ten, it talks about establishing a traffic authority and had, and then the roles and responsibilities of that. But basically, it would give the county and us the opportunity to put the responsibility of spending these funds in the hands of the citizens. It would remove the, the politics from it and it would allow that body to have full authority of determining what priorities needed to be funded. And I think that would probably provide a more, um, transparent process, one. And a more in-line, uh, expenditure of some of these funds opposed to what would be potentially what we've seen before, where it gets depleted before most of the identified priorities are even funded.
So I, I, I think the, the changes in the funding, cutting it by about fifty percent. I think they, would be better to go back at least the first reading. And what, because it's kind of almost like a new process, a new project, with the changes, reductions, some of them increased. But otherwise, you know, to pick up, I think that moved it back to second reading. But it, it would allow more opportunity for citizens to weigh in. The other thing I was wondering on, in paragraph, uh, section two, uh, point, point five, it talks about this oversight committee. And that now, on that oversight committee, we view for this board well. Uh, we have one representative that was sharing it, like they did on the, of a potential committee. Whether that, whether they will have a say in just what happens off of the board, or do they, everyone gets to weigh in on what happens in everyone else's area?
The way I interpret it is the consensus of that body would provide priority recommendations to county council. And it, it sounded like it would actually come from the administrator. And I know that the portion of that, or the ordinance talks about the administrator um, bringing to council the important features of the budget to council. Now, whether or not that includes the important features of each individual project, I guess would be, um, left interpretation. And I, and I wasn't clear on that in here. I was hoping that they would provide some clarification after we submitted the letter the last time. But it still reads that way. So to me, it sounds like this, uh, committee would identify the priorities and then they would submit that to the administrator who then would take this to council and say, these are the priorities. And then council would have the final authority from there.
Going back to what I said, uh, earlier about Reboot Road. I mean, I do not feel that they should be even talking about Reboot Road without bringing it to us again. Before they had the narrowing to two lanes, they had the traffic circles. They haven't told us what they want to do with it. That could still be on the table. Some of it still lives from what I understand, but.
We haven't heard anything else.
We have not heard anything. And here they are with Reboot Road, but not telling us what they want to do with the Reboot Road. Going back to what I was talking about earlier with the bridge, there is an item in section B, item nine. Future, they label it future projects, a hundred and seventy-five million. The county and its neighbors will continue to grow into the future. It worked, must be continued to plan for the transportation. Say exactly what, uh, as an example, and while not specifically listed here, third bridge between Port Royal Island and Ladies Island has been discussed for decades and given the growth of Ladies Island, may become necessary before too long. No, it's not may become, it is necessary now that they need to do, you know, start, get planned for a bridge there. I mean, it is necessary.
I think, I think that's a valid point, I, but I see that in their new proposal, the future projects, a hundred and seventy-five million. It was completely scratched out though. So they, they scratched that out of the new proposed. So that's not even. Right, yeah, yeah, for the future projects county wise. That's all, yeah, so the new one, they completely, that was part of what they scratched out.
I was told there's a bucket for plant, the planning of a bridge, doesn't need to be planned for, it needs to be built. We need to do something to, you know, get a, a third crossing. Uh, where it is, I don't know, but we need to get the plan for it and we need to get it built. I mean, not just planning, we need to start by funding it. And start looking for grants and everything, which that should be the county doing it. And start looking for grants and everything, which that should be the county doing it.
I, I think the part that's, that they're missing over there, that it said, um, it's still kinda topped down. But here's what we're gonna do, guys.
Yeah.
We didn't do it. It's gonna happen as opposed to not realizing the pushback they're getting from us. I suspect another municipality too. That, uh, you know, they're not really getting the input from the individual municipalities. And that's just doesn't work, so.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at a political body that, in their resolution to start this process, said that they would adopt the committee's recommendation that they appointed. That was their initial advisory committee.
Yeah.
And gave the parameters for the referendum. Uh, and based on that, they developed their ordinance. And then without consulting that committee whatsoever, they completely changed the parameters. And so when I look at their ordinance now, that says they will establish the citizens oversight committee to provide oversight projects, to grab those ordinance.
Yeah.
To gather input. I'm not sure I have the faith and confidence in them that they will actually consult that committee. Right. For the citizens. That's, as an administrator, that's my concern.
And in the beginning, they, the reason I thought it was written and all that, uh, Joe Passon, you know, and it got in all the hairs together and said, do you support, would you support transportation referendum? We said, sure, if we thought we were gonna get, you know, some help with our roads and all that. Well, this thing has morphed, you know, started out at one point sixty-five billion, now it's shrinking down. They didn't have enough time to do the legwork, which goes back to that committee, I think. They kinda pushed it on them, said, do something quick. We got a year to get this thing done, because we got this one back to ending, we wanna start the transportation task uh, as soon as possible, as soon as that one ends. Um, not thinking this whole thing through. And, and everybody's point, I think they underestimated the cost of all these. I don't think fifteen million dollars, if we had it, we spent it on our roads and, and improvements. We wouldn't have anything left, no.
I, I, you know, and I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how this would break down. It's, it's sales tax, so, you know, getting into the weeds there. But if you, if you were to say that per person, you were to take that five hundred and seventy million dollars that you raised, you'd be asking the fourteen thousand pe, fourteen thousand people that live in the city roughly to come up with over, or right at three thousand dollars apiece. And what would be gathered from the population in the city would be about thirty-nine million dollars. So I don't know that taking thirty-nine million and then providing fifteen million dollars back and then not even saying that this is for your municipalities' identified priorities, but rather this is for you and for you and for you with no clarification on which of those three priorities are gonna take precedent or how those projects are gonna get done. I just think is, to your point, it's not thought out or it's not as thought out as it could have been. The shame of it all is really that we need this. We absolutely do need a, a referendum to, um, catch our transportation and our roadways up to date, because in a lot of ways, we are behind. I just want to, and I think this whole council wants to ensure that if this thing passes, the people that we represent are gonna benefit from it. And right now, I know I can say for myself, I have zero confidence that the people that we represent are gonna benefit from this referendum. And I could see how it could very easily be that the projects, the, the two projects on there that are pertinent to the city completely fall off the radar and don't get funded at all. Especially, especially if these estimates are years old.
I don't know how we move forward on this at all. Um, I don't wanna be opposed to the, the referendum because of we need this money. But at the same time, I think the county ought to go back to that committee or that committee person. I guess Dean Moss is our representative here. They need to be involved and explain to us, according to the, the way you've got it written now, how are we supposed to divide the thirty million dollars between the three entities?
I, I think that providing two suggestions, and that's really all that it would be, um, would be appropriate. One, establish a transportation authority and put accountability back on the citizens and allow them to determine what the priorities are. And, and that, that body would have the ability to get contracts. Really, the only thing they can't do is eminent domain. And if they needed to do that, they go through the governing body to do so. But, um, and, and maybe there's something I'm missing. Maybe, maybe, maybe it's not a feasible option for a transportation authority. But everything that I can interpret in that state statute would lead me to believe that it is a, a valid option on the table. And I think that in the spirit of transparency, it would be a very good one to have a well-thought-out citizen body make those decisions. Um, and then two, I would absolutely advocate that they scratch off the unincorporated areas and the thirty million dollars that would be split between Port Royal and the city of Beaufort. Because if you're looking at the population of Hilton Head and Bluffton, then I think it's justifiable to say thirty million dollars for your identified priorities. But if you take that same metric, I do not think that it is appropriate for us to say that thirty million dollars is equivalent to the city of Beaufort, Port Royal and the unincorporated areas as it is to the municipality of, of Bluffton.
Thirty million dollars, everything go up the broad.
Right. And if you, if you look at, if you look at density, we, we may have less population, but our density is not far off from, from Bluffton per square mile, right? I mean, a, a little bit under. I think for a square mile, our density is, you know, five hundred and forty per square mile and theirs is six hundred and sixty or in that range. So we're still feeling the pressures on our roadways and we know that there's areas that we need to have addressed. So, um, yeah, I would, I would like to, to think that it would be more equivalent for the two municipalities to, to take that thirty million dollars and work together to fund priorities.
And I think Kevin would be in favor of it. It's there.
Right.
One of the other things, I wish Mike McPhee had been here because he's on the LATS committee. I'd like to know the LATS committee, what their priorities are. They need a long-range transportation study.
A lot of these, I can tell you, because I just read it. A lot of these priorities that they have identified here are and were identified in the twenty twenty-two LATS study that was done, the twenty forty-five long-range transportation plan. The problem is, is A, again, that survey produced that the number one concern was safety. And so to reduce safety by sixty percent for a hundred and fifty million dollars is questionable. Because that's, that is a factor. Uh, I'm not sure what the transportation technologies are. But if that's anything that involves better technology for timed lights and controlled intersections, then decreasing that by a hundred percent seems a little bit, um, of a reach to me as well, because I, I could see how we could benefit county-wide from having better technologies for our controlled intersections, if that's the route that we're gonna go. And then the, uh, resiliency and evacuation was like the number two thing that came back from that survey. That's reduced by thirty-nine percent. Um, my understanding is that the representative for District Four, Alice Howard, I think that she advocated hard for the evacuation. Again, not there for that conversation, but it was just made in, in their county meeting, a, a comment that, um, you know, she, she had pushed for that. And so I think the fact that there's fifty, that five million that remains there is probably to her credit. How far that was gonna get reduced? I don't know. But reducing it at all, when we absolutely have a need for resiliency and, um, evacuation fairness is, again, doesn't seem too advantageous to our future.
And I, uh, listen to this, I, I, I think time is kind of the essence of, I think we don't wanna not have this task.
Third, again, third reading is scheduled for by twenty-fourth Monday.
Yeah. While at the same time, we have great concerns about uh, our ability to influence our participation, uh, destiny with the money that they make out of it. So, you know, I don't know, I think for now, maybe conversation with this, you know, please pass it or Scott could do it.
I think the most effective communication would be, um, the mayor's and chairman passing it. And the mayor to the mayor of Port Royal, see if they had the same concerns.
Yeah. I think those, I think they both get passed.
Yeah.
I think both mayors could get passed at the same time, that might be a little more effective.
Well, and we just had that, so I think that could be a start. But again, I would like to see, too, if we could formalize something, like once you, if you talk to Kevin, we could formalize something based on the concerns expressed today and then the conversation that you guys would potentially have on the future. And then draft the letter that could be expressed and, and provided to council before their third reading would probably be beneficial too. You know, because that.
There's a lot of what we said in that part of the letter.
And I would say it again, I would say, we didn't read that letter at that meeting, but I would say it again. And for public record, that, and that's kind of, you know, I think why we're having this meeting too, right? Is to, to let people that we represent know what our thoughts are on how this has transpired so far.
Yeah, with, with three days left before, effectively before the third reading, which is why I think their conversation, you know, you engage with the, the, the passment. You know, to get something, to get it on their radar, that hey, we're not happy with this. Maybe they would consider, uh, at least delaying the, delaying the, the, the third reading.
I know they can't delay much longer because of the, getting done about.
Oh, it's August fifteenth is the deadline.
Sorry, thanks.
They've got, they've got a little bit of time.
You know, at least a thing of those would have been, you know, months or whatever. So we can get a chance to talk to them. But I'll get with Kevin, or at least, at least the next meeting instead of, you know, actually.
I will say that the addition of the oversight committee, while I don't feel like their recommendations would necessarily be honored at this point, I think that that was a very good start for, for County Council to add that in. And then, um, to their credit, the breakdown of them having three representatives and each municipality having an individual representative, I think is a very fair structure for that body. Um, and then if, if you look at it, not, no, not talking about for the, for the next one, for the oversight of, of this. But, um, I was, I was gonna say too, if you look at the language in here, each of those terms are four years, except for the three members that they appoint, three members that they appoint would have three years in their first term in order to have that staggered cycle. So to their credit, I definitely appreciate the fact that they gave us the lengthier time on those terms and they gave each municipality the opportunity to have representation. So I don't wanna make this seem like we're just beating them up. But at the same time, you know, we, we have provided our concerns in writing before. And I feel like for the most part, those were completely ignored, for whatever reason. There were some changes, but some of the major concerns that we identified were just left out altogether. Uh, oh, and then for, you know, just in case, that this is obviously stuff for them to clear up. But if you look at their proposed, I did find it strange that in a couple of places, um, one, being uh, page forty-one of our packet, one point four. County Council finds that the imposition of the sales and use tax in the county for the projects and purposes defined in this ordinance for a limited time, not to exceed fifteen years, obviously contradicts the ten-year adjustment that was made. And then if you look at.
It was just the type of.
It was, yeah, probably so. If you look at page forty-four, two point six, the sales and use tax, if approved in the referendum conducted on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, shall terminate on the earlier of April thirtieth, twenty forty, which is again fifteen years. So just some, some, maybe some, uh, clerical errors that they could tighten that up. But, um, I, I don't, I definitely don't think it was on purpose, because I think it was pretty clear that they were changing this to ten years. But two, two spots that need to be fixed.
I'll get with Kevin and Laura and see if we can put together a letter or at least comment and Joe Passon and try to meet with him. And maybe even, um, Jared Ferrell will speak. He might give us some clarification of what they wanna talk about as far as Reboot Road goes.
They, they haven't unveiled an updated Reboot Road.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm keeping the money the same, which surprised me, yeah.
But I think they can say they're gonna narrow it or traffic circles or anything, no.
I, I think we don't stop this third reading. I, I, and, and that's why I keep emphasizing, you know, uh, we, we, we need to probably put something that, you know, it'll matter more qualitatively. I think right now, just the compensation, you know, completely leader, might be the way to get going on this.
Yeah, we try.
I answered that, I think that I've given more choose for high as more time, they all are there.
Yeah, we, you know, the audio we can't, we don't want, email or whatever, you know, get to.
I wonder whether there's a subtle, subliminal signal set in that, uh, councilman's lawsuit.
Well, cunning.
Kind of, yeah, they didn't, they didn't file, they didn't include his amendment.
They, they didn't, they, they took that language out, uh, which was one of the things that we had. I mean, that was, uh, wasn't, uh.
Makes a point that you might have to go through tomorrow for holiday, you know, for the.
I would, I would wanna know too, because this is not a holiday. I guess that's green belt initiatives. I, I've saw this as green belt initiatives, but I was gonna, I was gonna say, um, you know, I, I would want to know too, if the fifty million dollars that'd be collected for that would be accessible to the municipalities, since it seems like they're not willing to have the green space funds that were collected be available to the municipalities if somebody wants to, to choose to buy down density. Uh, at least my understanding of, of what that body is looking to do is, is they're not entertaining applications that are municipal zoned into municipality if a developer wants to buy down density, which I don't think is fair, because our constituent paid into that just the same.
Yeah, I'm about to find out more about that process, but there is a pre-application for two parcels that was submitted. Uh, and there was some confusion on what some of the public was told. They were told they're, that the county was waiting on the city to make a, uh, endorsement, an endorsement of, of, of application that, what did he know had been submitted? Actually, an application has not been submitted, it was just a pre-application. Uh, but nonetheless, I've, I've got an ending phone call to Mark Davis with the county to talk to him about that particular one. And when I talked to him about that particular value, that she gave me a little bit of insight on, on, on what kind of influence municipality may or may not have in that process. But right now, I can't speak to her, I don't know about what kind of influence it's gonna have.
Well, I, I'm pretty sure they just worked with Hilton Head, um, to buy eleven million dollars worth of property that was funded out of that program to preserve some beachfront or something on Hilton Head. So that's, that's, that's good news. I think that's, that's valid use of those funds. I just would find it inconsistent if, A, that property is in Hilton Head and we were told something different. You know, they weren't entertaining spending those funds on, uh, property in a municipality.
These two parcels total two point seven one acres and are, and actually already ripe for, uh, multiple. Okay. And there's, uh, and, and the, uh, the actual pre-application, uh, encouragingly was submitted by the realtor that represents the owners of the property. So there's some indication that the owner is interested in this, our property, so, okay. We'll just need to figure out how to make that happen and what our role is in that process.
We're told the city of Beaufort, so I think all of those, but I'm still.
We haven't even.
I know, I'm just telling you that's what I was told.
Okay, any more discussion, anybody from the public have a comment? Good rank, but come on up and give us your name or address, correct?
Yeah, Graham McClure, working for the Ghost of Conservation League, uh, address is twelve, twelve King Street. Um, I'd like to, I wanted to comment during the discussion about the conservation subdivisions. Um, I'll just, uh, uh, think it could be a useful tool. I know that, um, I think NC State has got some really good examples of projects that have been successful in the past. Um, I think Davis in North Carolina also has conservation subdivision standards in their code. Um, that are pretty good. Um, I wouldn't encourage like meeting with the land trusts. Uh, the Conservation League is not, not a land trust technically, we're an environmental advocacy organization. Uh, but just trying to get a sense for like, who's gonna hold the easement if somebody is to, you know, pursue one of these conservation subdivisions. And if that is something. And if that is something they would be interested in holding, um, or if they feel like it's just a little, could be kind of like a watered-down easement they're not interested in. Um, and it may depend on acreage or the merits of the project. Um, but I do think a con- a conversation with the land trust, if the city is to pursue those um that that set of standards is is um gonna be important, so. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Mayor Patterson. I live in Beaufort, South Carolina. Um, I attended a Milken Institute sponsor. Three one seven Lawrence Street, Beaufort, South Carolina. A revolutionary war channel. Um, I attended a economic summit uh that included, it was in California. There's milk in the bond, King, but it began with the Milken Institute, where it was the feature of California infrastructure. They have the governor of California was speaking at the time on a large forum, it was at the time with Donald Schwarzenegger. He had with him on stage three Nobel Prize economists about how we should be funding infrastructure. Specifically, throw a few zeros, but the same question, here's nine hundred million dollars. The analysis presented was very interesting. If you do not use a bond to fund this infrastructure work and you just take the cash flow from the debt sales tax, they were able to double the amount of money they actually put in the ground on the projects. Much like you financing your home, you find out when the total money went out, you've paid twice for the value of what the mortgage was. The trick of it is the timing. These projects can't happen in the first year, but you issue bond money, so I need the money now. These come in from the day you start collecting, it comes in every month, a lag or a month or two, so you'll have ninety million dollars a year to spend. There's no need to issue a bond. There's a need to operate on the cash flow. And that dramatically improves the available funds, both in origination, the underwriting from the bond company, the fees, the monitoring for the bond companies, you operate on the cash flow. And it works as the three economists all were in agreement and each reiterated the use of bonds on short term where you have large cash flow right up front is unnecessary, very ex-uneconomic. I haven't paid for it from that presentation. I'll see if I can't find it. But I thought it was gonna be very helpful when you're dealing with these kind of figures. And it dramatically will change the available funds that you have. So something to think about, another way, don't jump, because the bond company says, we'll get the bonds rolling. That's their business.
You're right, because none of these projects are shovel-ready, so, you know.
It's going to be years. You see how long it is to do a simple project of a ten million. We're talking about that list uh will be ten, fifteen years, so you may have the money available to spend. But uh, you don't need to issue a bond for cash flow these projects.
Anyone else? Anything else from council? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this uh work session.